Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this work session for the Borough of Gettysburg Borough Council for Tuesday, May 27, 2025. Just a couple of brief announcements. An executive session of the Borough Council was conducted immediately following the adjournment of the May 12, 2025 Borough Council General Business Meeting, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act. An executive session will be conducted by the Borough Council immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly work session. Sorry, session meeting of the council, consistent with Sections 708A1 and 708A5 of the Sunshine Act, for the following purposes: to provide information and to discuss matters involving the employment in terms and conditions of employment, and the evaluation of and performance of current Borough employees, and to review and discuss matters of Borough business, which, if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. I just want to make sure everybody knows to sign in tonight, particularly if you would like to speak during public comment. We do have a couple of special presentations tonight, so we're going to start. We get to do this once a year. We get to say hi to our friend Mark from the GMA, gives us an update on all things sewage and water.
Good evening, and once again, thanks for having me. We're on a tight schedule tonight, so I'm just going to try to talk about a couple of things here, mainly some capital improvement projects that we either are currently working on or are going to be working on here into the future. Before I get into that, I just want to go over a couple of points and a little information for those who maybe haven't heard me speak before. The Water and Sewer Authority serves approximately 4,600 water customers and 3,100 sewer customers. Approximately 50% of the water customers reside in the Borough, while 50% of them also reside in Cumberland and Strabane Township. On the sewer side, 75% of the customers of the 3,100 reside in the Borough, with approximately 25% residing mainly in Strabane and a few Cumberland, but we don't serve a lot of Cumberland due to the fact that they have their own sewer authority now, established in the late '60s. So, some other facts. The Authority has an operating budget on the water side of approximately $3.5 million and on the sewer side approximately $4 million. A few years back, we set sail for some capital improvements, like many municipalities in the United States, and we're not alone here in Gettysburg. Obviously, we are facing aging water and sewer infrastructure that's either nearing or close to surpassing its intended lifespan. So, we started to take a look at that, and simultaneously, we also started taking a look, well, continuously take a look, at planning for sustainable system growth. So, we launched in 2023 approximately over $10 million worth of allocated capital improvements, designed to address both aging infrastructure and system expansion. These projects include water and sewer main replacements, system enhancements, construction of new infrastructure, and continued commitment to high-quality, affordable, and reliable services. So, I'll just go through a couple, like I said, projects. So, some things that you might see around town. This is the Cemetery Hill. We have planned for the tank to the left, the larger 1 million gallon standpipe. We still have to rehabilitate it and coat it and sandblast it and bring it back to its normal, original self conditions. The tank to the right is a smaller tank we no longer use. That is planned to be demolished here this summer. Cost for the rehabilitation of the larger tank is approximately estimated at about When that project happens, they'll be draining the tank, and that tank will be out of service for approximately probably six to nine months at a minimum. Another project, I'm sure a lot of you have seen this tank. It looks pretty hideous sitting out on the hill behind the Giant. It's an existing old standpipe. Beside it is our new standpipe I reported to the council the last time. The new 1.5 million gallon tank is up and operational. This standpipe is scheduled also to be tore down this summer at a cost of about $115,000. So, we'll clean that up. Additionally, when we talk about a growth of the system, we are looking to develop a well. The well is located south of Gettysburg, out on Sacks Road. It's a pretty extensive main extension and wellhouse project. It's going to be a couple of miles' worth of main and the construction of a wellhouse. We're currently finishing up acquiring our needed permits, and we're hoping to begin construction of that project near the end of this year, 2025. If it all goes well, approximately 300 to 400 gallons a minute, which is approximately a half a million gallons of water a day, would be addition to our current supplies. So, that's a good thing. Project that's currently going on, I'm sure some of you have already seen this, we're in the process of renewing or replacing some sewer infrastructure along Water Street, Constitution Avenue on the way down Racehorse Alley and over to Bream Alley. It's old 12- and 15-inch terracotta pipe. We're replacing it with 15-, 18-, 36-inch, 32-inch sewer pipe PVC. This will obviously eliminate the old infrastructure, terracotta, cracks, leaks, things like that, and it also eliminates some of the current infrastructure going under structures of garages and/or buildings. So, we'll be getting everything out where it's obtainable and can be maintained in the public right away. Total cost of this project is approximately $4.5 million, and also can, the job also includes some replacement of a wall in Bream Alley along the Tiber there, and that is part of a collaboration between ourselves, the Borough, and the Stormwater Authority. So, nice collaboration there to try to take care of that before we reiterate and put the alley back in place. Another project we have slated for the end of this year and the next year, main extension across Black Horse Tavern Road, extending out to Fairfield Road, and then up to Fairplay Road. This is another large project consisting of a couple of miles of pipe. This 12-inch water main will be installed, and will help loop what I call the west-southwest side of our system. This will provide redundancy to a booster station out there that currently provides pressure to the residents that sit on the ridge out there. If you recall, a while back, we tried to get a tank constructed out there, and we needed some variances, and we were denied. So, this is our Plan B to try to help provide redundancy and additional sources to that area. So, that has an estimated cost of approximately $2 million. Another project we have, we have a Twin Oaks Pump Station. The current pump station is kind of located on the other side of Stevens Run down between Dowtown and the back parking lot of the Community College. We are moving the station from close to Stevens Run in the floodplain, and we're moving it up closer to Dowtown, approximately a couple hundred feet up out of the floodplain. That will help us, obviously, in flood situations, and will also help us provide more capacity for the growth of the development out there, Courtney Meadows, and some added pumping capacity for leaking infrastructure and stuff like that, I&amp;I as infiltration and inflow. That has an estimated cost of approximately $1.6 million, and we're hoping to begin that project as soon as we get our permits here in the coming months, so hopefully maybe fall of 2025. And in conclusion, we have another project that we're working on in collaboration with the Borough, the Stormwater Authority, and Columbia Gas, looking to do some water main replacement on Lincoln Avenue in 2026. This has been in the talks for a couple of years now, and it's all coming together. So, it's another nice collaboration of a couple of groups there, trying to share just overall costs and not expounding, spreading expenses over a bunch of different companies and things like that. One restoration, one engineer, things like that can help all save a couple of pennies along the way. And finally, if we're in the process, all trying, obviously, but one of the big things also is collaboration with the Borough and Stormwater and everyone else, again, on the Baltimore Street Improvement Project, obviously, hoping, all fingers crossed, that succeeds this time, and that is obviously a big, big project, not only for the Borough, but it would include, obviously, a lot of water and sewer infrastructure improvements along that corridor also for the municipal authority. So, that's all I have, really, and just to say that, you know, GMA is dedicated to providing exceptional service to the resident businesses of all the service areas, and GMA and our board currently is focused on customer needs, maintaining professionalism, quality, and efficiency. And I know that's fast, it's a lot of information, but obviously, as I tell everybody every year when I come here, if anybody or anyone that sits on the council ever wants to take a tour, get a little bit more involved, see what it's about, the pump stations, the sewer plant, the water plant, or anything like that, feel free to contact me. We'll set up a little tour, a little powwow, whatever you want to say, but we'll find time to set aside and get you guys out and try to see all the workings behind the delivery of water and sewer. So, with that, I'll say, does anybody have any questions? Like I said, I know we're short for time.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Geis? I actually have a question.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of development going on in the area.
Yes, sir.
And a lot of it is within your area of operation, and I've heard some folks express concern about the impact on your ability to both supply as well as remove waste. Does the Authority have any concerns about its ability to build capacity for both supply and waste removal?
Well, currently, on the wastewater side, the capacity at the plant is more than efficient to handle the growth currently as it's stated and kind of earmarked out. On the water side, obviously, we are not, we're not concerned, but obviously, we know we have to do our part to continue to develop sources, and that Andrews Well is a huge addition to our existing infrastructure. We currently, obviously, produce water from Marsh Creek, and we have six other wells that help produce water in our system also. We try to rest those wells during the summertime, I mean, the wintertime, so we have them for the summertime when the flow goes low in Marsh Creek, and obviously, the addition of that Andrews Well, like I said, a half a million gallons, is a lot of EDUs. Obviously, there is growth, and we, you know, I don't know the exact number of EDUs, but between Strabane's projects, a couple in Cumberland, and what may be slated for the Borough here later, obviously, probably 1,000, maybe EDUs that well that we're looking to develop will probably produce a couple thousand EDUs worth of capacity. So, I feel that we're in good shape, but obviously, still always looking for additional sources, and always also exploring other avenues of wells and things like that in the area.
Do you have a projected date for the commencement of work on the Bream Alley Wall?
I do not. I expect it to be, hopefully, within the next six to eight weeks. I haven't heard yet on the, from the contractor, on the exact ship date of the wall material that they're going to use to construct the wall. I think that's all pending on delivery, but that'll all play a part in their construction of that alley.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Geis?
Jill, you would probably understand this. Is this going to have an effect on the 250th celebration next year? Traffic, any of these projects?
I don't, I don't think so. I think the where the work is slated for in 2026, I think it's off the beaten path. It's kind of down on Fourth Street and Lincoln Avenue, so I think it's kind of away from the, what I'll call, the corridor of Baltimore Street and Carlisle Street and Steinwehr Avenue and things like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Cool, anyone else? All right, well, thank you, sir. Thanks for joining us again. We look forward to seeing you next time.
Thank you.
All right, our second presentation tonight is from Ms. English, who's going to be talking about the hazardous waste recycling effort.
Karen Mesher and I and Robbie went on a little field trip to Cumberland County for a hazardous waste disposal program. I did pass you guys out some information. They have a very detailed packet of what they've collected. They do it quarterly, and it has how many pounds and the type of items they collected. And I did a quick little PowerPoint just to kind of show you how they have it set up. Basically, they bring all of the equipment. They bring boxes, totes, two tractor trailers, and we have to have it set up in like four different, four or five different lanes. So, we do need a big location. If we're going to do this, we were possibly thinking Gare or something like that to kind of partner with them to do this project. So, it does take, I think, two hours to set up, then they have it for about five, five hours or so, and about an hour and a half to break down. These are just some of the boxes and totes. It was raining the day we went, but they do need a forklift. They put it on pallets with these heavy bags. Basically, they set up the several lanes, and they have a permanent recycling center there where people can drop off electronics or anything during the week, and they just charge per pound. So, they do this every day. So, that's just a couple more photos of the setup and the separate lanes. Basically, the cars pull in, they have shopping carts, they put all of the materials, whether it's pesticides, paints, whatever they're collecting, in the shopping cart, and they weigh it. The weight is, so this is one of the shopping carts that has fertilizer or some paint, usually pesticides, other things in there, and they charge by pound. They have a credit card machine there. They pay right before they, you know, unload, get an invoice. They have probably a crew of 15 people or so, I think, that, you know, were working there with us. The scale, we would probably either need to purchase, I don't think they rent those, and they run about $450, but if it's something we're going to do yearly or quarterly or something, then it would be worth the purchase of that equipment. And they build a little ramp, put the cart on it, weigh it, they pay, they unload it, very similar to how we do our other event in the E cycle. They just kind of pull up. The folks that are handling this event are DEP certified because they are working with chemicals, so we are not allowed to touch any of the stuff, but we could help direct traffic. The company is MXI, and they kind of set up the whole, the whole day, so, and they bring their own employees. But like I said, we would need to have, you know, a place to park two tractor trailers as well, because they need to haul all the stuff they collect out. The event was scheduled between 11:00 and 4:00, and they had 400 people sign up. They handle about 20 people every 15 minutes, so they're highly efficient. The top three items collected are paint. Currently, new paints are latex, and they're not hazardous material anymore. It's the older oil paints that are a problem, but they still collect those anyway. Household cleaners and pesticides are your top three. Then I sent this out for council review, and it has all the poundage, and I do have some extra copies in case anyone in the audience would like a copy of that. So, total pounds for just aerosol paint was 4,718. Mercury batteries, antifreeze, it has it by pound to by the quarter, and then they have spreadsheets. It's very, very, very efficient, spreadsheet to the information and items they collect. The average person brought in 88 pounds of materials, so that came out to $66.15 per person of those items collected, and they had, again, 400 people sign up, so people weren't concerned about the cost, because I think it's a nice thing to have that out of your house where it's been probably sitting for many years. There are grants available. I believe we could get a grant to pay for some of that funding based on the poundage of materials collected. If we separate the pesticides out, I believe the Department of Agriculture will pay towards separate grant funds for the pesticides. So, we have to kind of work with them on that. So, what do we need to do this project? We would need a large space. We would need to rent a forklift, or MXI could provide one, or rent it from them. We would need a 30-yard dumpster, the scale. They would need a restroom or porta-pots, part of their contract items they need. We would need to inform the Fire and Police Department, and they will, MXI will acquire all the DEP permits and personnel. And that's all I have. If anyone has any questions.
That's great.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Yep. This is a great program. I'm excited about it, and I'm wondering, I don't know if the scale works over at the announce building, but the college has that scale that's built right in outside of one of the warehouse buildings.
Okay.
And I don't know if that would be a large enough space, but it might be worth checking with Jim Beaseck or the facilities director there.
Okay.
You know, we might have to shut down part of that alley for that period of time, but it's just a thought.
Okay, and I was also hoping to maybe put a little poll on Facebook to see what kind of items the community has that they would like to get rid of. Maybe we could special, you know, do a special event for just paint or fluorescent bulbs or whatever is the highest kind of items that people need to get rid of. So, look for that on our Borough page. Anything else?
Any other questions or comments? All right, thanks for doing this. Karen, thank you for helping with this as well. This is a really important initiative.
I'm hoping to try to do something in the fall.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. All right, that's our last special presentation for the evening, so we will now move on to public comment. This first section of comment is really restricted to items appearing on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak, we ask that you use the podium. Please state your name and address of residence, and please limit yourself to five minutes. Is there any public comment?
I'm Gareth Shaffer, Vice Chairman of Harb at this time, and I'm speaking tonight to try to just speak in support of the historic district ordinance and its importance, because I'm afraid, I'm concerned that in the discussion of the History Plaza in front of the Dobbin House, that the importance of the ordinance may get lost. As I look out, I realize that as I'm finishing my seventh, five-year term, the only person sitting at the dais that's been around with me that long as we've endured Harb, I won't embarrass her, but she was critical in the earlier days when we were under attack, but all the other faces are new, and I appreciate the difficulty that you're going to be faced with in weighing demolition versus a new project. And Harb too often gets this label of being obstructionist, just totally opposed to demolition, and I often have to repeat defense of that, that that's not true, because over the years, for many projects, we've had to look at demolition to clear the way for significant projects for the Borough, and that has included the homes that were removed so that we would have an in-town grocery store. When Kenny's was trying to build and couldn't find land, and Giant wouldn't work with us, we had to look at our ordinance and decided that that was critical. The Ag Hall, where Frederick Douglass spoke, was in such bad condition, even though it was probably one of the most significant buildings in town, it really couldn't be saved. So, Harb worked with the town and the Borough, and that was demolished. Demolition was given for approval. But we also found that demolition came too easily, and Mr. Frankel had written in the article the other day about our meeting. At the end, he said, "I had made comments about the fact that in preparing for the tourism of the 1950s and the 100th commemoration of the battle, we almost destroyed the town of Gettysburg." And if you go out Carlisle Street, you can see where the hotels all tore down, they're now dormitories, but tore down big homes that were along Carlisle Street. The gas stations tore down big homes along the gas, along the street. We saw recently the redevelopment of the Mead School as the federal point in, and what a wonderful project that is. But if you look at the other side, the twin, that used to be on the other side, we have a gas station where the Lincoln High School used to be, which was the twin to the Mead School. It was demolished for a gas station. So, this is why the town, even in an area where people don't like to be told what they can do with their property, this is why the town got behind the ordinance in the early days, and it wasn't an easy sell. We're in the, the ordinance was actually enacted about 52 or 53 years ago. I've served as chairman almost 40. We've fought a long time with ideas of what should come down, what should stay up, where do we embrace new development, you know, what's good for the town, how do we support reuse of old buildings? And we've seen that with the downtown has, we've got marvelous projects where older buildings have been reused. Demolition is a really significant component, and thinking and making sure that it's necessary is why the ordinance has been redone twice. 1999, to extend the ordinance out to the entryways into the Borough, because those entryways were changing with projects like the Pizza Hut and others, again, demolishing old homes and breaking up the character of the town. You're going to consider the zoning ordinance tonight, in which Gettysburg has the unique feature in many ways of their writing into the zoning ordinance, a "build-to" line, to make sure that people build their properties up on the street instead of being set back, because that openness detracts from the feel of the town in the historic district. All of these are underlying reasons that I'm kind of here to say, why Harb said no to the plaza at, or to the demolition. The plaza sounds good. We're hoping there's a way to do it without demolishing Victorian buildings from 1893. We've already lost seven buildings around the Dobbin House.
I know, interrupt for a second. We are past your time, but do please finish your thought.
All right, so we've already lost those buildings around the Dobbin House. We would be losing one more, relocating one. It does change the character of that area. So, the recommendation against demolition did not come easily for Harb, but it does honor the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public comment. Anybody else? All right, we're going to move on. If you change your mind, you can get us at the end. All right, so we're going to move on to current and old business. The first issue to discuss this evening is going to be Chapter 15 Parking Amendments. I see here we've set aside 20 minutes for this, which I think should be just about enough time to cover the 60 pages we didn't get through the other day, right? Now, we won't finish this tonight, but we're going to take another bite at this apple and try to work through a bit more here.
Becca, you want to take us?
Sure. So, I am showing that we left off at 15313, and I don't think you really want me to read every part of it, but this actually talks about the parking tickets, the payment of parking tickets, and the prosecution of unpaid parking tickets. This would be adding that the office of the manager or in their absence can change information on ticket details, like the state and the license, entering the license plate on the tickets, the state, details like that on the actual ticket itself. And then, in there, it just said the police officers would issue parking tickets, so we entered parking enforcement in there as well. 2A, nope, 2B, talks about the $15 discount for the overtime tickets only. It wasn't really spelled out in the section before for... It wasn't really spelled out in the section before for the discount that only applies to overtime, not any other violation for any ticket. 153133 is the prosecution after 14, after 30 days, I believe, that we have 30 days to send that to the magistrate's office. We generally send that between 21 and 27 days right now. Nothing goes before 21 days, so we do wait just in case. And I believe, Charles, did I, we add that to 14 in there? I'm sorry, I didn't have that one wrote down.
This edit has 14 calendar days.
So this is saying that we could send it within the 14. I don't envision that changing too much, other than some people do request that it goes sooner to the magistrate, so that we could send that in two weeks if they requested And then, the other, Part Four, is the dispute. And there's been multiple discussions, the mayor smiling, of who can, who is able to dismiss and void tickets and things like that. So this is setting up, would be how to dispute a parking ticket. And I can read this one because it is a total addition to this, I believe. It's "Dispute of a Parking Ticket. The Borough Manager or in Their Absence, the Mayor May Dismiss or Void a Disputed Parking Ticket Subject to the Following Provisions. A Parking Ticket Dispute Form Provided by the Parking Department is completed and filed with the Parking Department Manager or in Their Absence, the Borough Manager or in Their Absence, the Mayor within seven days of the Parking Ticket Issuance. The Dispute Form may be filed electronically or in writing, and if in writing and mailed, the correspondence must be postmarked no later than the seventh business day after the Parking Ticket was issued. Parking Ticket Dispute Form shall include the following information: the date of the Parking Ticket Issuance, Parking Ticket Number, and the explanation of why the Parking Ticket is being disputed. Timely filing of the Parking Ticket Dispute Form will preserve the seven-day overtime parking discount should the Parking Ticket ultimately not be dismissed or voided." And then, the disputed ticket hearing was added to that.
Was it, which version are you looking at?
I'm not sure. Is there different versions?
5.0.
Let me look. I have my computer here, too. Was that one scratched on there? All right, hang on, I can't.
Part B was the termination of disputed ticket.
All right, let me go on this. I didn't want to kill another tree by printing the entire chapter, so I was trying to go by that paper, but let me go by the computer here. It just doesn't scroll as easily.
So let's, while Becca's taking a minute to pull up the current edits, does anyone have any questions on 5.3131, 2, or 3 so far? Okay.
All right, I was hoping there was a question.
So in this Point Four, Dispute of Parking Tickets, does anyone have any questions about the process there as far as the mechanics of disputing a parking ticket? Previously, we kind of did an ad hoc dispute form. We do have a dispute form. This formalizes it in the ordinance. We didn't have it formalized in the ordinance before. So essentially, we're trying to ordain what our practice has been. Any questions or concerns there?
I just have a comment. I think it's a good approach because, as I've said since taking the mayor's office, I think that was a leftover from when the parking department was under the police department, and then the mayor would have the right to dismiss those tickets. I think since the parking department now falls under the borough manager, this makes much more sense, and it outlines what, it disciplines the process instead of just saying, well, listening to whoever, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. There's a lot of things that go in there. And I think it's much less harsh because when I said it, if they dispute it, let them take it to the district magistrate. No, but a lot of people were like, oh my God, because that's so much money. And it doesn't follow the goodwill. I think this is a great, yeah, because when I said that, people were horrified. But I think it outlines what the procedure is and what the guidelines are. And I think it's excellent.
Yeah. Thank you for that clarification, Mayor. With regard to the hearing, I think at our last meeting, we had talked about that, but struck it. Because if someone's not happy with the resolution at the dispute level, at the manager or mayoral lever, level, or police chief level, then that hearing actually is the magistrate. So there's no need for us to, at that point, put that in our ordinance. We would refer it into the, after that 14-day period up here in Point Three. Questions, concerns? Okay. Becca, are you, have anything?
I'm back.
What's that?
I'm back, yes. So, does that, that takes us to Part Four, then?
Yep.
Okay. So, Part Four is On-Street Payment Parking. And, sorry, because I have to scroll here to see where the next changes would be.
We have an edit on 1.2. 402, 1.2. Multi-space kiosk shall be designated by appropriate signage.
Yes, we added the space, the signage to this. And that was, and the kiosk in, if we ever add kiosk or just app-only anywhere, as we have done in the past, in the garage, we added the kiosk up at the college, there's an app-only. So this is in here in case we add it other places, so that it's already there and we don't need to change that and keep updating. So hopefully that will cover meters, kiosks, and signage.
We added the word "kiosk" in 405 because it didn't exist before.
Payment for parking. That was the only thing left out of that one, was the kiosk. So that was added there. 406, I'm showing, kiosk and signage was added for the regulation of individual parking spaces. And then, there was just a, when these spaces went from two-hour to three-hour, it looks like it was just missed on Part 2A. That two-hour was missed just on this section, so that would be three-hour, which it's, we've currently been using. It was just missed on the ordinance on this section. 15 would be removed. These are the meters that were already removed and voted on that were removed, they're gone. So this would just be cleaning up the ordinance and removing that out of there. 12-hour, nothing's changing on here, right, Charles, as of right now?
Point Four, Saturday versus Sunday.
Oops.
Between the hours of 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM, Monday through Saturday, or prior to 1:00 PM on Sunday, prevailing time.
Oh, and four, down in four, okay. Sorry, I thought, I just meant the 12-hour, because there was a note beside it there, but I think that was an old note as well. So that, I believe, has been an error in there, that said Monday through Sunday, and the meters are all in operation Monday through Saturday, 8 to 8, Sundays, 1 to 8. So I believe that was just a mistype in there from before. All those holidays are matching with every other holiday that we have there. The next one is 15411, I think.
It's a brief edit in 409. "It shall be the duty of the police officers and/or meter enforcement officers of the borough in accordance with the instructions of the borough manager or parking manager to report all violations, removal of the mayor there."
And then we go to...
It's 411 is the next one.
411. This is talking about the, instead of, so currently, if you read a ticket, it says, and it's an over, any ticket, but let's just say an overtime ticket, it says you have seven days to pay it at $25. The fine is normally $40, but if you pay it within seven days, it's only 25. That is only the overtime. But at the very bottom of the ticket, it has always, since I've ever been here, said if it's not paid within seven days, it can be prosecuted and sent to the district justice. So that confuses people if they do have just seven days or not eight days. And so this is changing the language a little bit, so that at $40, a parking violation, the owner will have up to 14 calendar days from the date of issuance of the ticket. And that's with, you don't get a discount, but it won't go to the district justice before the 14 days. And that, and then, let's see, that was A and B, the 14 days.
412 is the last edit.
412 is the borough, collection of and counting of coins. And that was, "The Borough Manager or Parking Manager shall designate some member of the Parking Department or other person to collect the coins."
It's Chapter Four, Questions. Harry, you look absolutely so excited.
I am. Always my favorite subject.
All right.
That's a great spot to stop.
Okay.
With 5 minutes and 18 seconds to spare.
Okay.
I just have a quick question. Becca, I've learned so much about parking. Now, the rule about motorcycles, is that should be in a local ordinance or is that a state law? If one, if they can park three to a spot, explain it, because I was like, oh, this is fascinating.
So, I don't know that that is state, I know what we do here. So I don't want to say that's anywhere else because it could change from town to town. But in Gettysburg, as long as you can, if you can fit five motorcycles within the lines of a space, you can park them there. But if, and you can share the expense of the meter. But if any of them are expired, every single motorcycle gets a ticket.
Because you don't know who's paying.
I just wanted to bring that up, yeah.
We don't know who's together, if you're together, somebody would say, you know, well, I paid, but then they parked and they didn't pay. And so, everybody gets a ticket if you're expired, just like if it was a car in there, any ticket's getting a car, any car is getting a ticket, but everyone gets a ticket.
Thank you.
All right, we'll pick this up on Chapter Five at our next opportunity.
Great. So our next topic of discussion is the Gettysburg Welcome Center, Construction and Management. We have five full minutes set aside for this.
I don't know that we need all five. I'm going to ask Ms. Sellers to take the podium while I introduce this. Obviously, we know that the Gettysburg Welcome Center is percolating along at what I hope to be a fairly quick clip moving forward. So just some updates on the mechanics. If you remember, the borough was an applicant in front of our own Harv. Mr. Schaefer was part of that deliberation. If you remember, Harv authorized demolition of 340 Baltimore Street with the provision not to be demolished before construction funding is acquired. So, this update is, the contract with HUD has been finalized, which means those funds are now available for use. And, which brings me to Ms. Sellers' update on timelines and fun things and, I don't know, pushing buildings over and fun stuff.
Fun stuff, yeah, I know. We're talking gently about demolition tonight, I understand that. So, but, so this project's been going on, as you know, for about six years now. We've gone through the, many, many hoops, but here we are with construction funding in hand. That's a federal grant. There's borough match money. There's also private match money through Main Street Gettysburg's, you know, fundraising arm that we have tried to make sure that we have a match for any borough monies that are expended, so to keep that cost to taxpayers as minimal as possible. So we're sitting on enough funds based on the estimates for construction at this point, so we've secured the funding. The plan going forward, after meeting with the architecture team today, is we're looking at the first week of June for demolition. Today, they successfully moved the electric off of the neighboring homes, so to enable that demolition, obviously safely. We're coordinating with C.E. Williams and Public Works to make that happen. Demolition really will only take probably four, five days, plus a little cleanup. This is not a big, a big project as far as that goes. It's, the lot is 30 feet across, and, you know, and the new build will, we're starting to put together the bid specs for the summer. That will happen in July. We will be visiting Harv again with all those specifications, materials, and the final, final drawings for everything, so that we can seek that new approval. That will go out for bid. We hope to open those packages in August, make an award, and it should be shovel-ready by the fall. The goal is, as it has been, to be ready for 2026. And in my mind, the schedule should be, we should be opening that building about this time next year. So, it's pretty exciting. You know, the HUD process was taxing, to be kind, but, you know, certainly 1.27 million dollars was worth all the extra paperwork and the environmental assessments that we went through. I think we did our due diligence as requested, and I think the public is going to get a tremendous gift through this whole process once this opens and changes, changes the heart of our downtown.
Any questions about that?
Thanks.
Then we can segue right into Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project, Design Elements.
Oh, yeah, that. I'm going to reset my timer for 30 minutes. So if you remember, we had two public engagement meetings to go over any number of design concepts for the various phases. There's three phases. Specifically tonight, I think, I think moving forward, and Chad, correct me if I'm wrong, you don't need design guidance until, say, late summer, is that correct?
Generally, generally, that's correct, yes. We kind of need some direction, probably within the next two months, to continue to head down a certain path. But as we move forward, we're going to need to start nailing down that direction more and more. I would say at least two more months before we really need to start getting actual, like real hard, direction.
Okay. The reason I ask that question is, we have this meeting in May, June, and then July, which I was thinking, from a time management perspective, to kind of deal with each phase, each meeting. But if we want to go further than just Phase 2B tonight, that's perfectly fine, we're ready to do that. Of the participants at the public engagement meetings, 20 of the 32 participants ranked street lighting as a priority, 23 ranked sidewalks, crosswalks, street lighting as a priority, 23 ranked sidewalks, crosswalks, ADA compliance as a priority for Phase 2B, and traffic calming, 22 people of the participants. So those were the three priorities that were identified. Generally speaking, that's consistent with what, you know, we've talked about in that corridor. Obviously, that's the corridor where we had the fatality and the two buildings that were essentially destroyed through the fire that ensued from that. So given that background on Phase 2B, if you remember, our partners at Michael Baker provided a landscape architect to work with us in those meetings, and so here are some of the design concepts. So if you remember, this is where the gateway coming into the borough on the, from the south side occurs. Here you have Evergreen Cemetery, the Gettysburg Tour Center, the orphanage over here on the other side of the street. So you can see here narrowing the street, incorporating this kind of hedge-like, more green space on the west side of Baltimore Street. Another design concept was the boulevard idea that came out of our meetings, which frankly hasn't been discussed prior to our public engagement meetings. So here you can see a boulevard is created, a green space in the middle with piano key crosswalk, with kind of a safe harbor space in the middle of the street. So if you have a pedestrian crossing from one side and there's oncoming traffic, they can make it halfway across the street, wait until it's safe to continue. And there's actually two locations where that happens. One, near the trail system into the National Park Service, right across the street from the gatehouse at the cemetery, and then again down near the orphanage or the Gettysburg Tour Center. Each of these has decorative streetlights, the historic streetlights that we have throughout town, so that would be a consistent theming, if this is the concept council would like to ultimately pursue. And I think there's one more rendition provided to us. Yes, so this is, if you remember, this is kind of like, you have the two decorative lights on either side of the street, the street is narrowed with this green space again. Some of those more heritage-type lighting continue down on the west side sidewalk, and then near the trail system and the Gettysburg Tour Center, you have essentially what would be a change in medium. You would go from a blacktop to some kind of paver, just that when a car is going over, you know, you really should be slowing down, because you're entering a different realm. So there's that, that concept there. So with that, let's just open it up to the council for some discussion, and I'll be happy to flip between these renderings as you wish.
So I think most of us participated in at least one of these meetings, some people two, I believe Patty was at both. So I think we're all fairly familiar with the concepts as they were discussed, both in small groups and then as larger groups, so I don't know that we need to get too far out into the weeds here. So of those three concepts that were proposed, I believe the third one got the most pushback from PennDOT, is that right?
Yeah.
They were not a fan of the.
They definitely do not want a raised surface.
Yeah.
And they were not necessarily a fan of a different type of surface, is that correct, Chad?
Right, the raised surface would be like a speed table, kind of like we have on Broadway, they were not a fan of that. So, and let me just elaborate a little bit more on what Charles and I were saying about the timing for this. So when he's saying that September is when we kind of need to know for us heading down to design, that's accurate. The scoping field view is what we're in right now, it's the phase of the project that we're in. PennDOT calls it their field view, because they literally come out here and walk the street. They have already done that, and you might have heard me talk about this chicken and egg thing, where I need to get their approval, and I need to get National Park Service approval, I need to get the Borough Council approval. To me, the Borough Council approval, and that includes public input, was the first thing, because I take direction from the Borough Council. They were suggesting that we can't go to the public engagement meetings until we have the PennDOT field view. So we did a field view and didn't have this idea or this concept of the boulevard. So I just wanted to mention that tonight. So now we can't get past the scoping field view until I take that back to the council. I'm sorry, back to PennDOT. That came up at our public engagement meetings, and we thought, hey, that's a neat idea, let's take it to the council and see what the council says. As the council squashes that idea, you just say, ah, we don't really like the boulevard, we want to go to the street diet, one of those other two things. PennDOT has seen those things, they're going to approve our scoping with the street diet and us go on to design phase. So I don't really need an answer on either of those, I just kind of mostly need an answer on, do you guys, are you considering the boulevard idea or completely not? If you say completely not, we'll take it, we'll remove it from the table, we'll go back to the other two, and we can move forward with our scoping. If you say yes, we would like you to take that back to PennDOT and see what they say, because there is a chicken and egg thing, I got to go back to PennDOT yet and see if they're okay with the boulevard, and then, then we can get to that, what Charles is saying, to the, to the, to the design phase. So I just wanted to give you a little more flavor about what we're talking about, the schedule for the next couple of months, so.
Sure. Can you slip, flip back to the street diet drawing? So this one seems like it would be dramatically easier than the boulevard, substantially cheaper. We already know that PennDOT would look smilingly upon this design, but I guess the question for council here is, based on the conversations you may have participated in these sections, do you think that this really addresses the concerns that the community brought to us? The traffic calming, the pedestrian safety, the, you know, all of these different aspects that people consistently, routinely were landing on for the entire project, beginning to end. I feel like this doesn't give us the same pedestrian access, it doesn't give us these, you know, safer crossings, we would still have people jaywalking, and unfortunately, it's usually right out of a blind curve. So of the two, I mean, like, this has benefits, right? This drawing, this drawing has the benefit of being less expensive and probably more easily attainable in terms of permission from the state, but the other one has, I would say, a much more elegant approach, and I do think it's noteworthy that that is something that didn't come out of the brains of our engineers or any of our partners, that came from community involvement, and it really is different than what we had come up with, and it, it has a beauty of design to it that I think is really appealing. So where's everybody?
Yeah, I personally like this one, and I agree, as far as what the public was saying during those sessions, I only attended one of the two, but this meets what they were talking about a lot more, specifically the safer crosswalks. Very similar, Chad, correct me if I'm wrong, but similar in ways to the crosswalk over on Baltimore Street by Mr. G's. It's a lot safer of an area, that specific crosswalk. This won't be an exact match to that, will it? But it definitely is going to be safer than the jaywalking that's been happening. That other one, which I think you called the diet, I don't see a difference in what it looks like now versus that. I don't see much of a difference, personally.
Yeah, and one of the things that we'd often like to keep in mind with, where we designate crosswalk locations, it actually is human nature, if you make a beautified crosswalk location, it does generally attract people to it, and they'll want to go to that. But you're not going to stop all of the, the able-bodied jaywalkers are still going to jump the curb, run across the street real fast. It's really intended to make a place that's a little safer for a woman pushing a baby carriage, or somebody in a wheelchair, or something like that, so.
A median like this, I'm going to call it a median, the, with what looks like it's going to be some type of, you know, nice lighting, some, some greenery in there, it automatically slows traffic, because it's like you're entering a neighborhood with kids and people on bikes, which we all have there. So I really think that this is, that's the one that I'm landing on, out of the three.
I'll go. You want to go, Chris?
Okay. Yeah, I prefer the boulevard design as well. I remember someone in my planning group was concerned about the median strip having, having trees and shrubs, and whether or not that would be safe for fire and police, should they need to rush out Baltimore Street onto 97. So I think this is a great idea, save for perhaps having the trees in the middle, would one of our fire trucks or police units need to get through there, should there be an emergency? That was, I thought that concern was, was really important, and, but yeah, definitely prefer this design.
To follow up on that, I don't know there will be trees in this island, because I know the Park Service is obviously very concerned about the view shed, so whatever shrubbery goes there would be low, low, low sitting.
Low to the ground.
Yeah.
Perhaps we can even get some more funding for lovely Gettysburg Garden Club to help us with that beautiful, beautiful entrance, that so many people come into Gettysburg through that area, and it, I just think that's going to beautify a lot of that, and, and I agree, that, keep it low, so it doesn't, for, you know, for the view shed of the National Park, I get that, I get that, but I also think that that's slowing down the traffic, the proper pedestrian crossing there. I like that one.
Yeah, and let me elaborate on the, on the emergency vehicle thing, because, and it was a good point, and even our Public Works Director also had that, shared that same concern, so we collaborated after the meeting, a little bit, the engineers and myself, and we confirmed, we definitely know that we can come up with a design that's going to be safe, it's still going to allow emergency vehicles through, no matter if we had trees there or not. I think Charles hit the nail on the head, we can't really do the trees because of National Park Service, but no matter what we do, shrubs, there's going to be places for the emergency vehicles to be able to pass over. This is going to be a mountable curb, kind of like we have in Broadway, so a truck will easily be able to just drive over that curb if we provide locations for it, so. It's a good point, but we definitely have that in consideration, and that shouldn't be the item that stops us.
Chris?
Yeah, I also prefer the island design here for the reasons stated, the calming of the traffic, pedestrian access, the aesthetics too, I think you talk about gateway connectivity. You can tell this is a gateway, once you enter into this, this part of town here, and do you anticipate, Chad, any PennDOT pushback with the island, as far as, like, with the other boulevard situation?
I'm channeling my inner Todd. Todd was our traffic engineer that works with, with PennDOT, and he said that, he made examples of other state roads where these exist. So, and mostly you think of these, you know, these, these islands as less of a boulevard type of thing, whenever it's in a PennDOT setting, you know, it's not like our Broadway, but, I mean, you go down to the beach, and there's an island, the whole way down A1A, and you go to Hanover, where Walmart Eisenhower Drive is, there's an island down the middle, now, these are two-lane highways, are a different thing, different monster, but there's islands in the middle of state roads all over the place. So this wouldn't be the first one, certainly won't be the last. I think we can meet the criteria that PennDOT would give for us to have an island, so they might push back a little bit. I think their biggest thing is going to be, make sure they can get their snowplows through it, and if they can't get the snowplows through it, then we go back to what we've done in many other streets, where the borough has to take the responsibility of snowplowing. So I think either one, either way, we can get, get around that too. Again, my guess is that PennDOT won't say no to this. They might have some, some design parameters that we had to fit within, but my guess is that they'll allow us to do it. I don't want to speak for them, though.
Peter?
Yes, as far as the different options here, I'm more in the favor of the boulevard. I almost like, instead of the piano keys, more of the decorative cross or side, crosswalks, like in the third one, but if that would be, I know that the piano keys are on the more economical side, and so if, if the funding was an issue, I understand that as well. But anything to kind of give you that sense of importance and kind of serenity as you come into this area, and make it, and make it safer, I'm, yeah, I'm on board with it.
Patty, do you have any input?
Remembering back to those public meetings, my group that I was in felt pretty strongly that the, that boulevards were the right way to go in terms of calming, we all, calming the traffic, we all remember the fatality that occurred, what, two years ago?
Yeah.
And then the point that my colleague made, Mr. Berger, this is a gateway connectivity project, and that will help with the aesthetics in terms of visitors approaching from that southern end will know that they are coming into, into Gettysburg. So for all those reasons, I support that as well.
Yeah, I think we can't really stress the importance enough of investing in the appearance of this section of town. This is where, you know, I don't know if we'll ever know which percentage of our visitors come in from which road, but, you know, I try to imagine driving on this stretch of road for the first time, as I did, whatever, 15 years ago, whatever, and the first things I see, you know, are this gigantic parking lot and a rusting standpipe, and it's time for us to really kind of put an effort into making sure people know that they've arrived here, and that, I mean, I think what, I forget what we call the bus center here on the right side, the work they did at rebuilding that has been such a dramatic improvement. It's on all of us, I think, to continue pushing for a much more attractive approach with this project. Okay, so it sounds like I'm hearing everybody's pretty, pretty keen on the boulevard.
Yeah, I got what I need, that basically gave me the green light to go ahead and, and present that to PennDOT and see what they say, so.
Just bear in mind, everyone, PennDOT might break our hearts.
Yeah, and this is by no means a final approval or decision on, on this option. This is just giving me direction to continue to head down that path. Like I said, if you, you said, if you would all stood up here and said, we don't really like that idea, and don't waste your time, Chad, then I wouldn't waste my time.
Yeah.
So I still can't say that it's going to be approved, and even if it is approved by PennDOT, it's going to come back to you guys a few more times for, for additional approvals, so.
That's right.
So you're not starting to build tomorrow?
I have eight minutes.
You're not starting tomorrow? Still, we still got to talk about it a lot more?
I think the second phase actually should not take that much.
LaFever?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to the middle of the geographic area, if you remember, we have Phase 2B in the south, Phase 1, and then Phase 2A, which is the square. Of the respondents, the participants in Phase 1, the top three ranked criterion are street lighting, 18 of the 32 participants, 22 ranked sidewalks, crosswalks, ADA compliance, and then it was a, kind of a close tie for traffic calming and traffic signals at LaFever Street. So I will note that in this area, this is the, the Phase 1 is right in the middle, right where we're getting ready to build our welcome center. So our partner with Rabbit Transit, who is also funding, has committed to not only funding part of the design, but also funding part of the construction, they're desirous of a bus stop in the very close vicinity of the new welcome center, so that's kind of baked into our design processes moving forward. Our landscape architect gave us the rendering of the intersection between South Street and LaFever Street, and Chad, I'm just going to zoom in on this a little bit, and I'm going to turn to you to explain the concepts here. I believe, obviously, this will become a signalized intersection, and so if you want to address all that, and then have council respond to it. Sure.
So currently, there is a. So currently, there is a, what we would call a traffic signal. It's a push button and has a flashing light, the rapid flashing beacons that allows only pedestrians to go through. But that intersection is, is really hard to navigate, especially whenever a school lights out. If, sure, if you've driven through there, whenever a school lights out, you'll see the traffic, the, the crossing guards, they have to stop the cars to be able to get the buses out. So the idea is, is to, is to put a traffic signal there mainly because of the traffic on LaFever. Well, it's so close to, to South Street that you can't just put a traffic signal on LaFever, you got to also put one on South Street and have them timed together. The idea is to, to bump the curbs out in those locations where the, the traffic signals would go to, to make room for the traffic signal itself, but also to have more pedestrian area, calm the traffic in the area. There isn't a lot of parking proposed right at, or already allowed right at the intersection anyways, so you're not eliminating a lot of parking just to, to bump the curbs out for the, the traffic signals. A little bit further up, like where our welcome center is going to go, then there's some questions on, should we continue to bump the curbs out and lose some parking there? Should we bump it back in? That's all stuff that we can work out during the design phase, doesn't really change the scope at this point. So generally, what we're looking for from you is, is do you like this idea of bumping these curbs out, kind of giving it a little bit of a street diet, putting in a traffic signals? One other thing to note is, that is the bottom of the hill. All of the water drains to that spot, and it's a lot of water. And that's where we start this, we call it the Weinbräner culvert. I've heard of Mike Malawicki talk about this. It's not really a culps run, ultimately turns into culps run, but it's really Weinbräner run. And Mr. G's Ice Cream was the Weinbräner farm once upon a ti- upon time, but there's a, there's a culvert that goes underneath of that sycamore tree in front of the, the, Mr. G's, and then it goes under the back of the welcome center. And all of the stormwater in this area is going to have to get into that culvert. At some, we're not exactly sure how that's going to work. It's really old culvert that's failing. Our structural engineers are very concerned about the structural stability of that culvert. So I just wanted to mention that that's going to be a major component of this. It's not really something that a landscape architect is going to be able to show a fancy design of a stormwater pipe, but that is going to be a component of this, of this design as well.
I thought one of the most interesting things the engineers said at the second meeting is that even though it has this, you know, cattywampus layout of the streets here, it's, if we look at the crosswalks, you can actually start to think of it all as one intersection. I thought that was a pretty important distinction there. There's a few places in the area where we have, you know, three lights that are timed in three segments instead of half and half, like Hersridge comes to mind as being a place that is, where it doesn't function well. But I think right here in town, with narrow streets, with school crossing signs, with flashing crosswalks, with the narrower streets, the chain, you know, rail designs, planters, that sort of stuff, is going to encourage people to move through it a little bit slower. And putting the lights here, I think, is, is just absolutely critically important. Is there anything about this design anybody doesn't like? You're okay with the traffic calming, the narrower streets, the moving of those curbs inward?
Yeah, that's specifically what we, at least the day that I was there, the public was all in agreement.
Yeah.
That if you've ever seen, you know, when school lets out, and thank you to the crossing guards that Gettysburg School District has for that. But, so Chad, just to back up what you were saying about the stormwater management is with that, what was it called, brine?
Weinbräner.
Weinbräner.
Weinbräner?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying is, that's part of this project, we're going to do that first and then make it pretty on top?
Exactly.
Yep.
That's the plan.
And it's going to help several other places that are, will be affected by the brine winner, winner, brine, brine thing.
100%.
Yes, thank you.
It's a pretty ugly thing.
Sure, sure, sure.
That we all need.
Patty, do you have a, any input?
Excuse me?
Did you have any input on this design?
No, no, it looks good.
All right.
Support it.
Peter, you good?
Is the, the, the chain link fences that we see here, or maybe not chain link, but however they, they would turn out, is that more for like a safety concern for the, for the schoolchildren? Or is it, is it just kind of like a, is it more a different aspect of the design element? I only ask this because obviously these, when we have the parades and everything, people line up, you know, all, all there. So do you see any issue with that? Or do you think that this is, as far as the safety point of view, this is a better?
Yeah, and so the idea there is, is like I said earlier, able-bodied people will just cross the street, though, the jaywalk wherever. That gets increasingly dangerous whenever it's a traffic signal and even a cattywampus like this one. So the idea there was to try to provide something to really channel people to have to use the crosswalks, like they would have to jump over a chain or something like that in order to be able to get, to cross that intersection other than at the designated crosswalk. We had some, I, there's some discussion about, not at this location only, but a lot of places, having something a little bit more structurally rigid, like a bollard that would actually stop a car if they get out of bounds and try to run into the traffic. So we could have something like that that connects like a decorative chain. There's places like that, there's roundabouts, you know, if you go through Jefferson Borough, they have one, they have another chain the whole way around, and there's a lot of different places like that. So we haven't really figured out the specifics, the design details there. Of course, you guys will have a chance to weigh into that, but that's what it's for, is to really channel the pedestrians, not just the schoolkids, but any pedestrians, to those specifically designated areas for crosswalks.
Would the crosswalks still have those flashing lights like it has now, or would those be out?
They would be gone. Yep, they would, this would operate just like a traffic signal where we have a push button and you had to wait for the man hand. You couldn't have both. You can't have the flashing lights and a traffic signal because they would be conflicting traffic control devices.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns on that? All right, I think you've got a pretty good design there. All right. So let's then take a break, and we'll revisit the square in the next session. Does that, does that work for you, Charles?
Yep.
So we will move on to the big one of the evening, which here is going to be the comprehensive rezoning effort. So a little background on this, this is a project that the staff brought to us initially late 2021, early 2022. Our former planning director was growing concerned that three to four times a year we were amending the zoning ordinance. And for one reason or another, sometimes those revisions were getting to a point where they could contradict each other, and we were ending up with a ordinance that was hard to decipher. You know, you want to buy a property, you want to know what you're allowed to do with it. You would go to our website, find this document, think you had landed pretty keenly on, yeah, I think I can get away with doing this. And then you buy the parcel, you go to the planning department with your, your proposed plans, and they go, no, you can't do that. That's also under three, three overlays that you were unaware of. So the planning department asked council for permission to begin a process of replacing the existing zoning ordinance with a new one. This is a arduous process. It is one that requires great sensitivity and thoroughness. And so rather than making our one person in the planning department at the time rewrite this entire 100, and I think the old one is 140 pages, rewrite this document by themselves, we decided to contract the services of a civil engineering expert, Michael Baker and Associates, who have not only written dozens and dozens of these from municipalities, but they also have access to a pretty substantial database of these ordinance from all around the Commonwealth and, and the Mid-Atlantic. They also are much more up to date on current law and statute, both at the state and federal level than most of us are, with the possible exception of Mr. Whitmore. So rather than do this heavy lifting ourselves, we decided to contract with an outside firm. The project began, we assembled a working group. Our previous council president asked for one volunteer from council to participate. I decided I would do that. Additionally, we asked two members of the planning commission to participate, and we also asked several people from in and around the borough. Gary was involved, people from county planning were involved. The working group spent 10 months working closely with Michael Baker International to craft this new document. And what we put together is longer than the original one. It's 181 or 190 pages, but it also has much more comprehensive tables in it and is organized differently. We spent 10 months doing that, and we then sent it to the planning commission for markups and reviews. We asked them to spend a period of time reviewing it and to also conduct public meetings to get feedback from the public in a more comprehensive manner than we thought council would be able to. They spent most of the summer of 23, four, engaged in numerous public meetings, and I believe one or two town halls. People came out for this. It was an experiment, I think, for us in many ways, in trying to collect as much input as we could in cleaning up the document. The express goal from the beginning, as it was detailed by council, was not to create a radical departure from our existing zoning ordinance. It was to clean up our existing zoning ordinance and to make it easier to navigate. We were not looking for any major reimaginings of how we, we set these rules. But there obviously was things that were out of date. There were things that were contradicting each other, and there were things that needed to be addressed. And then there was also a short list of things that the planning department would find desirous to change. We did have a bit of a hiccup midway through the process in that our previous planning director left, and we began a search to find a new one. There was a period of time during this process where we didn't have a planning director in place. And then we hired on Mr. Whitmore here, who really, I can't say enough good things about, hit the ground running and has been present and engaged and has demonstrated his incredible depth of knowledge on these processes. And I want to express gratitude for you coming into a project that was not yours and helping to see this to the end of Phase 2, which is where we are now. The task before us here is going to be sort of multifaceted here. We're, we, in your packets, you have the original existing zoning ordinance, but then you also have the, the working group's draft, and then you have the draft that was just completed by the planning commission after about a year of working on it. The three documents are not wildly different, but there are a few places where they definitely do not click, so that's what we're going to be tasked with reviewing. So what I've asked Mr. Whitmore to do here is to give us the detail, but also then to give us sort of a microscope view of where changes have been made, and we need to make sure that the public's interests are being met. We will begin doing this tonight. John's going to, I believe, present his document here and touch on some of the larger issues that need to be discussed and deliberated over for the next few months. We are not going to sit here, as we did with other large documents, and read all three of these versions, word for word, into the public record. We did that with the handbook, we've done that with a couple other things. I'm going to ask every month, member of council here to spend some time over this with, over the next month, spend some time with all three documents. I'm not asking you to memorize them, but you do need to be familiar with them. We will then begin to review it in chunks, organizational chunks, the same process that we used as a working group to write it. So there are, there are some major components to it. There's the map, where those lines are drawn and why. There are the zones, where those lines are drawn and why. There are the uses, et cetera. We'll go through it, we'll talk about the issues where the three versions do not agree, and we'll come up with what council wants to see enacted. This has, unfortunately, this process has gone on longer than we initially envisioned it lasting. We were hoping to have this done by the spring of last year. Based on the growing list of business that we are going to have in front of us over the next six months, I think we're going to be lucky to be enacting this by spring of next year. That said, we do need to begin this work in, in earnest here this summer. So with that, I will stop yammering, and I'll hand this over to Mr. Whitmore for our introduction to this incredibly important piece of ordinance.
Good evening, and thank you very much. In terms of the initial background, President Moon has provided quite a depth of the general, not general, but the overview of the process that's what happened to date. This is a three-phase project, Phases 1 being the steering committee, review committee, Phase 2 being planning commission review, and now we're at Phase 3. Council action, goal being adoption of a zoning ordinance. The municipality's planning code provides the basis for the review. We do have a unique review schedule that occurs now that it is with the council. The opportunity to have a document go before a public hearing, you will have an opportunity then to make edits to that document. It gets a little funky when it comes to if it's substantial changes or anything like that, but we'll be able to have a process that, when moving aggressively, would take four months. But to begin tonight, currently, you're operating with the 2008 zoning ordinance, so to speak. This is a document that has been updated a few times since 2008, with most substantial updates occurring related to vacation rentals, Airbnb, VRBO type of deals, and the Elm Street overlay. With regards to the initial draft of the document created by the steering committee, that document was established over 12 meetings. The real changes you will see make the document legible. Each zoning district includes a specific rendering showing how lot design standards are to be interpreted. Also, they include the general lot provisions. Most of those are related to the existing conditions of the zoning district. So we have the same R1, R1A, R2 districts, the same old town district, general commercial district, and healthcare district, and the industrial district. It's all been transported in the same. We do have new districts. These include the NC1, NC2, NC3, and the planning commission included NC4. The NC districts involve the, I'll say, the mixed use, and they range from the NC4 district having a very residential focus, as it only affects the Carlisle Street properties, approximately 17 of them, we'll get into that a little bit later. But it has a phase where from 1 to 3, you allow for larger, more commercially oriented uses to occur in these parcels. Most of those NC changes are the result of a overall desire in the steering committee and in the process to enable additional residential housing opportunities as the borough has experienced business growth in the core, which is a good thing. business growth in the core, which is a good thing. So you're having an active metropolitan area. You have a central business system that's expanding. That creates pressure, though, on your residential land uses. It becomes more practical for a landowner to rent their property, especially for something where a higher density, a higher intensity use, like an office, will create a better rent premium for the land. To combat that, that's why we have zoning. We allow for the, or encourage, the more residential-focused areas to have residential housing. In the process, with the planning commission in particular, there was a real desire for our low-density, single-family dwelling-type neighborhoods to maintain that identity, specifically looking at Cold Park, looking at the Broadway corridor around the college. So it was, it's been a very, I would say, rich dialogue with residents and citizens of the community, but also we wanted to make sure there were feasible opportunities for commercial activity. When looking at the changes, most of the comments we received were from property owners that were, if they were seeking a change in the zoning as proposed from the steering committee or from planning commission, their request was almost universally for an upzone. So if they were in a property that was going to be zoned R2 or had previously been zoned R2, they generally were seeking to have a mixed-use NC type of zoning. In situations where properties had previously been zoned Old Town and they were recommended to be zoned into either the NC1 or other R2 district, the quest was to maintain the Old Town zoning. Old Town zoning provides for pretty much a myriad of commercial and residential uses. It's, with the exception of those that are more automobile-oriented. So that's not unexpected. Many of the requests had been historic requests that we've received a few times, as this idea along the lines of maintaining the residential character of the borough has not really diminished over time. There's always been a push, at least from the research we were able to see, that of maintaining structures, maintaining how the town operates, how it actually, the interactive feel for residents. So with that, I'm going to steal this real quick. I can see it. Just wanted to go through some of the imaging specifically in the memorandum that was sent to council, providing for the changes that occur between all three documents. Now, when it comes to the initial document, that is a clunky document. Many of the ordinance definitions aren't necessarily related to provisions of the ordinance. And alternatively, there are land uses and other concepts that really need to be defined that are not defined, which presents not necessarily challenge, but provides the opportunity for zoning officer to make a determination, in which case, if the party that's being affected is not in favor of that, then they can go seek a judgment to try and overturn that decision. It can create problems and we'd like to see legislative, legislation providing for clear guidance to staff as opposed to making up determinations that may have detrimental impact to the ordinance. So previously identified the NC1, 2, and 3. We also have the revitalization district. And in terms of the changes that have occurred to the draft, this one and the NC4 are the most substantial. The revitalization district as proposed, we currently have what's called the residential office redevelopment district. It encompasses the properties that make up the Gettysburg Station project and the SCAP property. The proposal with the revitalization district was to target properties on the west side of Carlisle Street in addition to the Gettysburg Station property. Those parcels that have one-story buildings, so think of like where Taco Monarch is located, there's a warehouse property owned by the college, just low-intensity land uses that are directly abutting your core. These are your prime real estate properties and can have a much higher optimized value. One of the things zoning intends to do is to provide for the best and optimized land uses for the area. So this is something, when evaluating this idea and concept, the steering committee really wanted to ensure that provisions that were currently allowed were maintained. And that's something, when planning commission was reviewing the document over months of discussion, one of the biggest challenges for the planning commission from the steering committee draft was the building height. As the current ordinance allows in the residential office redevelopment district, you have the ability as a developer in those properties to seek a special exception for increased building height, a maximum of 72 feet in building height with additional 12 feet for mechanicals per the ordinance. We utilize a system of performance zoning, so there is a, you encourage the applicant to provide the, in this case with the borough, a system of land uses that were beneficial. And let me see if I can pull it up. The family residential, of course, I can't find it now. Okay, yeah, so is the, I was right there. The internal parking designs of, for a mixed-use building, the idea that you put parking into the structure's design to alleviate potential surface lot issues and also then, A, provide the parking. Relocation of transit center services, public green space requirements, and improvements for the construction of the Gettysburg Interloop. Those are all in the current ordinance. The steering committee recommended an additional provision specifically related to affordable housing. So that would be, it's inclusionary zoning whereby, I believe the request was for requirement that in the event that you're going to be developing a residential product, you would provide 10 units at an affordable rate. It was, it wasn't necessarily like a very detailed inclusionary zoning program, so it was something that when discussions were had with the planning commission, it wasn't necessarily built upon. As a result of the planning commission draft, all those provisions were removed. The district height was changed to 48 feet. That's the current standard in the Old Town District. And the provisions for building massing remain the same as provided by the steering committee. So that was a change that's pretty, pretty big from the current ordinance and the steering committee draft. The other large change, large-scale change is the creation of the NC4 district. The NC4 district affects properties that are currently zoned residential office on Carlisle Street north of the square, but near the Gettysburg College campus. This would be, all of those properties would become NC4 under the planning commission draft, with the addition of the Paxton Hall property, which is on a separate block north of the RO properties that are currently zoned. This district would operate as a residential district, R2 as the base. That's your moderate apartment, allows for apartments, student housing, things like that. Building form is built more towards a traditional housing design, as shown in the graphic, a three-story building. The overall uses, the commercial ones, are really geared towards college actions that are currently happening. Many of those properties are owned by the Gettysburg College. They are permitted to operate even with a change of zoning and a grandfathered status. So they, the interest from the college was the ability to transfer some of those properties. In looking at the opportunity, we wanted to, we being the planning commission discussion, the idea being that maintaining some of those uses in a private fashion would not be a problem. There were a few uses proposed by the college that were potentially problematic and were not furthered by the planning commission. That all then comes down to the, the big piece of the puzzle is the zoning map, which actually affects the what and where. Current map provided here is actually available in a digital copy, which we're accessible on the borough's website. But as you'll see, we have here the standard static map, which is just our general zoning. And when we talk about the thing becoming really cluttered and messy, it's when we add on the overlay districts. It becomes really challenging for property owners, especially the ones that have historic properties of the Elm Street overlay. We, most of the questions we receive for those properties involve changing the land use to something that's already not permitted, i.e. vacation rentals. So it's generally an easy, easy system, but we're not necessarily encouraging anyone to develop with, this is the product that they're seeing on the website. The initial draft zoning map, this was provided by Michael Baker. In it, you'll see this area to the north, this Carlisle Street area is zoned R2. Paxton Hall is R1. There's also portions of the properties along the railroad that are zoned industrial. The proposal there was to utilize the existing rail corridor to alleviate heavy truck traffic. There were some other provisions, other properties that we looked into, having potentially higher zoning classifications, NC1 in this neighborhood area on Victor Street. And then also some of the properties along Steinware being zoned general commercial. Then the request for the community and looking at those properties being either owned by Park Service or American Battlefield Trust, understanding that changes may be required. And such that the most recent draft from planning commission includes the NC4 district, and you'll see some parcel-level changes. Most of those are individual, one or two parcels here or there. Many of the requests we had, though, involved Middle Street. During the planning commission review, there was a substantial request from property owners of commercial properties along West Middle to either have those properties zoned NC1 or general commercial. That was evaluated. Staff provided multiple options to the planning commission to evaluate their interest in having either mixed use, actually NC1 mixed-use properties, such as like the Four Square Church. There's the AC&amp;B Bank Building, a podiatrist's building, the Realty Office, more, Grave Memorial Service Company. Those properties, if it would make sense, over discussions that took about two, three months, that the proposal as provided by the steering committee was recommended by the planning commission. There were, as I noted, a few individual parcels. We had one on Red Patch Avenue that was of real interest to the community in that neighborhood. They really did not want that property to be R1A, which the only difference between R1 and R1A is that R1A allows for bed and breakfasts. The whole point being that those are much larger structures. Being able to keep them residential may require that some of the rooms get rented or at least providing that income stream. So that property was removed at the request of the property owner and the neighborhood. Other than that, the, I guess, final, I would say, big change is the definition of family. The current definition and definition as was proposed in the staff, in the steering committee draft, is provided up top. Generally, it's going to be group of four or fewer persons who are not related by genetics, adoption, or marriage, and none are whom are wards of the court. Or not, if you have more than that, you're not considered a family. That comes into play especially in the R1 district where single-family is generally going to be the required occupancy standard for a structure. We do have other single-family dwellings that have existing grandfathered exceptions to this. We also then had a scenario or a situation occur during the review process where there was concern from community members regarding the, I want to say that, I forget the exact term we came up with, but it was the fratification, so to speak, of certain single-family dwellings.
Foternities.
Yes. But wanting to ensure that individuals who are congregating together for economic purposes as opposed to establishing a housekeeping unit were discouraged from doing so in those R1 district properties. That was something that came out from the community. As such, we used the, at the time, Department of Housing and Urban Development's Family Definition Guidance. It has since changed, but it's still the same if you go to the regulations, that the term "family" includes, but is not limited to, the following: regardless of actual or perceived sexual orientation, gender identity, or marital status, single person, elderly person, disabled person, near-elderly person, or any other single person or a group of persons residing together. Such group includes, limited to a family, with or without children. And that gets into the different classifications of having children in a form of foster care or an elder family, near-elder family, or disabled family with tenant family. So a whole bunch of different ways to say "family." We also then provide the provision at the bottom that says a household consisting exclusively of two or more full-time college students does not qualify as a family unless each individual in the household satisfies the following conditions. And that's the individual must have established a household separate from their parents or legal guardians for at least one year prior. The basis for that is to establish that they are actually planning to live there as a household together as opposed to living there because they're in college and they're all, it's a great way to have fun. So that's, those are the big changes that occurred. In terms of the minor changes, there's a plethora of those, but most of them relate to defining things that were kind of just, like, not necessarily imaginary, but weren't necessarily clearly cut and dried. Many land uses that were commercial in character in the current ordinance are what would be considered a retail sales establishment. That could mean a whole, a whole lot of different things. And as we found during the planning commission process, that can include things such as vape store, tobacco store. There's been a real concern with that specific use nationally. It's fundamentally different than a traditional tobacconist store. So it's something that, that's one that's been taken out from just general commercial given its own use class. Few others, the public market as opposed to a farmer's market, and then some different office uses, as most of our offices, office uses were either, we could, currently we consider it an office use, which is, I guess, anything happening in an office. But then there's a medical clinic, which isn't quite the same as a personal services, which could be a medical use. It's just really trying to clean up those instances where the land uses can become a little intertwined with one another. And there are situations where one particular type of land use may make sense in a district, but in other instances where a similar type under that classification would not make sense. So that's, in looking at those definitions and looking at those concepts, that's what the steering committee and planning commission has provided. And looking at all of this, it's being conducted in keeping with the 2019 Joint Comprehensive Plan. The comprehensive plan provides the basis for this document. And generally, the recommendation is, is that it's in keeping with that planning document to make the land use components occur and then therefore the plan achieved. Long, winding speech. If you thought parking was exciting, this gets even better. But by all means, we're here to answer any questions you may have immediately. I see that the vice chair and the secretary of planning commission, who were also on the steering committee, are in attendance. They may be able to provide some additional assistance.
Okay. I don't know that we're going to get too far into this here today, but I think we have a roadmap here moving forward for how we're going to be addressing this over the summer. I would direct this question to our
To honor and to reflect. People ask us, why are we doing this? And we tell them, yes, it's very expensive, but it's more important than money. We believe it gives us a direct link to our founding fathers by helping to preserve what it is they gave this country, a government to serve and protect we the people. If you want a monument or a setting to last, you put more underground than above ground. These are not tip-over monuments. Your foundation goes down three and a half feet. It is solid reinforced poured concrete coming up into a solid reinforced core. Just the core and foundation of the center display weighs over 38,000 pounds, over 19 tons. There are six documents displayed. All are life-size, which means the Declaration of Independence is a little larger than the others. Each one is on quarter-inch etched bronze and weighs over 60 pounds. There is a Charters of Freedom medallion on the front, which is very special. The eagle represents the Declaration of Independence. Proud, bold, defiant. The seven stars above the eagle represent the seven articles of the United States Constitution. The 10 stars under the eagle represent the first 10 amendments, your Bill of Rights. From the beginning, this has been an education project. We learned we had two founding fathers who were very big on education. Thomas Jefferson and Benjamin Franklin. These two believed that in order to have a free and independent country, you must understand how government works, that you cannot control what you do not understand. Thomas Jefferson, in 1789, said, "Educate and inform the whole mass of the people. They are the only sure reliance for the preservation of our liberty." And James Madison wrote in 1822, "A people who mean to be their own governors must arm themselves with the power knowledge gives." Our hope is that our future leaders will come from communities where they have their own Charters of Freedom setting, that your children will no longer grow up just talking about the Constitution and Bill of Rights of Washington. They'll be talking about their United States Constitution and their Bill of Rights, the ones they grew up with right in your own community. My question is, are you ready to be a part of history? Because we're going to dedicate your Charters of Freedom. It's going to be here for the next 300 to 500 years, and your future generations are going to know you are here.
So that gives you the overview of what this project is. It's going to potentially create this setting right here in Gettysburg. And I don't want to get too far ahead of the applicant Ms. White, but this is an engineer's rendering of what a plaza in front of the Dobbin House would look like, which would contain the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, and then in Gettysburg, the idea is to actually add a few others, obviously, the Gettysburg Address and perhaps the 13th Amendment abolishing slavery. Ms. White's proposal, this is the parcel map around the Dobbin House, and then if you, specific to the request for Harb, deals with these parcels here, this house here, this house here, and a couple of structures in the back. And then I will let Ms. White explain her vision there. But ultimately, the vision would be this. That would be the new Charters of Freedom Plaza in front of the Dobbin House. Before Ms. White comes up, I'd like Jill Sellers with Main Street, who walked this property and is familiar with the concept, to share a few words as it relates to economic development and the amenities this would bring to the borough at large.
Thank you all. I'll keep this brief. So Charles mentioned, you know, the meeting last week with Harb. Of course, they're spot on on their decision. That's their purview. But however, as we bring this to Borough Council, and I say "we" because I've been privileged to be part of these meetings, council, and of course, holds a different responsibility, and that's the overall care and stewardship of the community. That includes infrastructure, public safety, economic development, and sustainability. Charters of Freedom represents a rare and significant private investment. This is not tax dollars. This is the applicant working through a very daunting project and willing to give back to the community. It's exactly the kind of bold initiative that sparks other private investment, and it generates what's called a multiplier effect, meaning that we're going to see greater economic output on the other end across the community. So that's going to produce, stimulate growth, all the design things. So tourism, you already know, you know, thrives, it makes our city thrive. We've got to grow that heritage tourism. We have to keep investing in it. We've seen that with our Baltimore street renderings that you saw today. Why is that important to make that Southern Gateway look appealing and appropriate for where you are entering? This is another opportunity to really highlight our history. And again, it begs the question, which piece of our history, as you look at the Dobbin House, turning 250 years old, as the nation will do next year? This is an incredible opportunity. I also want to review real quick some recent history, like within the last 15 years. So going back, the Museum and Visitor Center that was on Steinware Avenue forever, forever and ever, and moved to Baltimore Pike, that was a huge blow to Steinware Avenue. Steinware bid stepped up, figured out a $7 million reinvestment in the streetscape, and I think that was an incredible sort of hail mary pass at the time, because all the indicators at that point was that Steinware Avenue was going to become housing. Those businesses would not be tourism viable. And that did not happen, thankfully. However, what Steiner does not have any longer without that Museum and Visitor Center is a focal point of any kind. This reinvestment is super, it has a depth that is really necessary on Steinware Avenue. The bid provides a lot of marketing, events, parade support, but despite those efforts, Steinware has never fully recovered in the last 17 years. We're seeing signs and real concerns of economic stagnation there, and I can talk about that offline, but walk that street and you will see those concerns, I hope. And I hope we can mitigate those with these kinds of initiatives. So the proposed Charters of Freedom Park would provide a long overdue focal point. It would place meaning, education, and civic pride all in time for the 250th next year. It's a project that's going to benefit the Dobbin House, no doubt. But it's a forward-thinking investment in the future of Steinware and the future of Gettysburg overall. For the Borough Council, Gettysburg holds a unique responsibility. So this is a balance of historical integrity while simultaneously balancing an open economy. This is not Williamsport. You are not the Williamsport, not Williamsport, Williamsburg. Sorry, my son lives in Williamsport. But this is not a closed economy where a foundation manages the historic district. These are families, business owners, investors, that are figuring this out, property by property, and this is a property issue. So my suggestion is that I strongly encourage you to support this extremely rare opportunity to marry the opportunity of Charters of Freedom and the investment that that outside entity is bringing, as well as the investment of a longstanding community and business owner that is willing to invest in not only who lives here now, but generations to come that are going to really change the face, preserve the face of another piece of our history that is going to be vitally, vital to tomorrow, but also vital to next year as we make a mark and create a legacy together. So I'll turn this over to Jackie, and she will give you all the details. Unless Charles, oh, you're back.
Jack. Okay, Jackie.
Thank you, Charles, and thank you, Jill, for your kind words. And thank you to the Borough Council for allowing me to speak to you tonight. As Charles said, this started with a meeting of the Main Street Board, a longtime member of the Board. And when this foundation came up with the idea for the Charters of Freedom in Gettysburg, I thought, I got excited right away. And Charles didn't say, but they actually started, you know, it's the Declaration of Independence, it's the Constitution and so forth. So they started, of course, in Philadelphia. Well, Philadelphia gave them the runaround, and they said, forget you guys, and they headed over to Gettysburg. So we're very lucky, I think, that they want to put these documents here. And I got excited because I thought, wow, how great to have the Declaration of Independence document, and then people look up and there is a monument to that document, Reverend Dobbin's home, the oldest house in Gettysburg, built the same year as the Declaration, 1776. So that's kind of was the start of the whole thing. But I understand that you folks have a difficult decision to make, because to do the park the way it needs to be done, we have to eliminate a building. So I was reading the latest little newsletter that the Borough puts out, and it was talking about the values of the residents of Gettysburg and how they value their town. And that got me to thinking about values. And so then, as the more I thought about it, the more I thought, I think we need to compare the values of the Charters of Freedom Park and the values of this house that I'm thinking of taking down. Well, okay, the house. I talked to the Historical Society. They couldn't give me an exact date on it. They don't have one. They said it could be as old as 1890s, or it could be even into the early 20th century. But it's old. And as an old house, I own the Dobbin House. I know the value of old houses, and that's, they're very important. And when we talk about, hey, everybody, come to Gettysburg for the Christmas festival, we always talk about, see the small-town charm of Gettysburg. So this is very important. I have no doubt about it. But there also is a value to this park that we're thinking of creating. And I'd like to talk, if I may, for a few minutes about this. Well, one of the things that Jill and the other members of the Main Street Board talk about quite often is the phrase "quality of life." And I thought about that, and I thought, okay, so what would this park do to the quality of life for the residents of Gettysburg? Well, they come to this gathering place, and I have to hold up, this is the 2009 redevelopment plan that the Steinware Avenue bid created. And in here, it talks about having open gathering spaces, and that Steinware Avenue should have a little park. That got me to thinking, of course, this is 2009, that's 17 years ago. I've been on the board of the Steinware Bid now for that long. I was one of the founders of the group, and we still don't have a park. We still don't have a central meeting place for anyone. So I thought, wouldn't it be great if we could do this right next to the Dobbin House and with the Articles of Freedom to teach and to inspire? And I could do a lot of programs in this park, especially for children. I used to be a teacher at Cumberland Valley High School, and so I understand the importance of reaching out to our next generations, future children and residents of Gettysburg. So we could do so many wonderful things there. This was, this would be a value that would enrich the lives of the Gettysburg residents. And then I thought of the value of beauty and restoration. You know, the two houses that I'm talking about here, one of which we're going to just move back to make room for the Articles. Those houses were not here in 1776. They weren't here in 1863. They are more modern buildings. They, nothing at this one, 95, excuse me, 99 Steinware, nothing famous happened there or anybody famous lived there. It's a nice house, I admit, but the beauty, the value of a park where people can relax, where they can reflect, while they look ahead at the 1776 Dobbin House, and then they can turn around, right across the street is where President Lincoln and the Gettysburg National Cemetery gave the Gettysburg Address. What a unique perspective that is. And I thought, this is the perfect place for the Articles of Freedom. And again, for people to read, to get inspired, and to learn from them. So another thought that I had was the economic value, and this is probably real important to you as the Borough Council. This Articles of Freedom, it's definitely going to bring more foot traffic to the area. And more people mean that the other restaurants, the other hotels, the shops, the museums, there's going to be more people there, and it's going to be an economic boom for the area, no doubt. And if there's an economic boom to Steinware Avenue and to my fellow business owners, who I've gotten to know very well over the last 17 years as I've worked with them, and now, you know, we know each other, it's the Steinware Avenue Business Improvement, which was started, I must say, by Main Street Gettysburg way back when. It's going to help them, it's going to help Steinware Avenue, which in turn will help Gettysburg, of course. Gettysburg is going to be known as even more of a wonderful place to visit and to sit and enjoy, reflect on our history. And then another value that I thought about was the historic monument, being a memorial to our past. You know, first of all, definitely Reverend Dobbin. Next year, 2026, will be the 50th year, I can't believe it, 50th year that I have been with the Dobbin House. So I have been around this man's home, and I feel like I know him. And he, first of all, was a Scotch-Irishman who would be, I think, very happy to have the Articles of Freedom on his property, because he was from Ireland and Scotland, went to school in Scotland. He knew about the persecution that the English did to the Scottish people in the 1600s. And so he would have been very big proponent to the revolution and to the new country. We know that he donated horses to the country and to Washington's Continental Army. And he was big on education. I know this because there were a couple students, a couple boys, of course, that were in Reverend Dobbin's congregation. Well, they heard that Reverend Dobbin was a trustee at Dickinson College in Carlisle, and they wanted to go there. Well, they couldn't, because there were no schools at that time. And they said, Reverend Dobbin, can you help us? What does Reverend Dobbin do? He starts a school in his own house. And for 16 years, he taught these young boys everything that they needed to know. They were accepted into Dickinson College and other colleges. We have records of some of their students. They became very prominent in ministers and doctors, lawyers. Reverend Dobbin's son was the first lawyer to be admitted to the Adams County Bar. And educators. One became the president of Washington Jefferson University. One went out to Ohio where he became the governor, and later he was elected to the United States Senate. So I'm sure Reverend Dobbin would be for this project. Another person that I keep thinking about is my sixth great-grandfather, great-great-great-great-grandfather. He was one of the first European immigrants to come to this area. He came here in 1738. And so that's almost 300 years ago. I'm the ninth-generation Adams Countyan. And another person I keep thinking about is my father, who is a very proud First Division Marine. I can't say Marine without saying First Division, or he'll be upset. But and then I think of the other settlers that were our early people that braved coming from Europe to come to this area, which was a frontier at the time, so it was, and who settled here. What, gosh, to leave their families, to leave everything and come here. And then I feel like they're standing behind me. I feel like they're here helping me to talk to you, because we do so much in Gettysburg for the Civil War ancestors. You know, all the time, we have statues everywhere, we have events that take place all the time for the Civil War. Well, I think that this would be a great project to give respect and importance to our colonial ancestors and to help people realize that there was actually a Gettysburg before 1863. So that historic memorial is also a very important value. So I hope that over the next two weeks, you will all think about the value of a house, which is a very nice house, it really is, and the value of maintaining that house versus the quality of life and the beauty and restoration, the economic value and the historic memorial value that the park would create. I think that it would be a wonderful thing. I realize that it's got to be an extremely powerful and awesome project in order to take down a house. I realize that. But I think this is one. And this is an opportunity from the Charters of Freedom and from me, a citizen who wants to give back to my community. And it's probably a once-and-only-once opportunity that you have. So I hope that you'll think about the values and hopefully think that this park would be something that would enrich the lives of not only our residents here in the town, but also to our many thousands of visitors that come here. Thank you again for listening. Thank you.
All right. We all have a couple of weeks before we have to deliberate on that decision or not. I do recommend members take a stroll down there and visit the site. If anybody wants to go, let me know. I'll walk down there with you, and we can talk about what's being proposed. There are many things to weigh here. All right. We're going to conclude our new business section tonight. We're going to move to our second public comment section of the evening. This is not restricted to items appearing on the agenda, but we do ask you, limit yourself to five minutes. Please use the podium and the microphone. Please state your name and address of residence.
Nick Redman, 138 Ridge Avenue. Just want to speak real quick to NC4 for the rezoning, because John brought it up, and I do agree it's kind of odd. I think the issue we were facing there is that there's some interest on Carlisle of adding a bit more development, a bit more business opportunities. But being zoned R2, we didn't want to add all those business opportunities to all of R2. NC1 through 3 are very permissive in terms of what commercial things are allowed, and we felt that those were kind of too much commercial. And so it kind of forced us down this road of creating an additional kind of neighborhood commercial. So it was a tough issue, and I don't know that far solution was the best, but I just want to kind of give that little background to explain why there's this kind of really odd, small zone in Carlisle Street there. So just real quick on that. And then from a personal perspective, I really just want to say I love that plan for the intersection by Mr. G's. As someone who uses the crosswalk by the post office and the crosswalk there at least multiple times a week, nobody stops for those little things, unfortunately, particularly in the day when they're hard to see. So adding those lights there would just be fantastic and make it so much easier to cross that street and get from kind of the South Street neighborhood to that, you know, the nice little path along the schools there. So I think that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment.
Good evening. I'm Bill Mooney, 151 West High Street. Unfortunately, Mr. Harbaugh is not here, but I would like to acknowledge him and recognize him and his crew. Obviously, yesterday was Memorial Day. Every holiday parade, every major special event is either on or around a holiday, and those guys, obviously, they get paid, but they're, it's time away from their family. I worked with Mr. Harbaugh and his crew for New Year's Eve last year, and they are professional, they're responsive, and they're very helpful. So I just wanted to give credit where credit is due to Mr. Harbaugh and his crew. We're very fortunate to have those guys. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other public comment?
Hello, Sarah Kip at 126 Baltimore Street. I just wanted to repeat myself from what I said in the past, but I thought it was an opportunity now that you, I'm sure you're looking for a new police chief. So I wanted to remind you about the 30x30 Initiative, which was, you can look at it yourself, at 30x30initiative.org, which is an initiative that over 400 agencies have adopted to try to encourage women being included in the police agency. So now that you're hiring someone new, I hope that you'd consider either talking to that person, that are your applicants, about their familiarity with that initiative, maybe even hiring someone who's been in a community that has worked with that initiative, and at least considering that as something that someone would be encouraging of when you hire your new police chief. So, thanks.
Thank you for that. Any other public comment?
Good evening. Dave Peters, 13 Lincoln Square, Gettysburg. Want to talk about our Saturday routine protest that appears to be ongoing for the rest of the summer. Unfortunately, it was not a great weekend in Gettysburg for that protest. We, in our restaurant at Bloom Gray on 2 Baltimore Street, we had four customer complaints where the consensus was they felt it was a hostile protest, they felt unsafe while dining. And, you know, you've heard my opinion before, that the Borough Council has the authority to limit the times of the protests and the location, and that I feel it's an unsafe location, being on the most dangerous intersection of the borough, and you're really distracting, distracted drivers already who are confused with the traffic circle. So I would request, at the very least, that there's a greater police presence with the visible uniforms around. And we've encouraged the people that felt threatened and wanted us to do something, which, other than offering them seats inside the restaurant, we suggested they email or contact the borough with their concerns. I really don't want to provide private security for my customers, and I hope this is an ongoing thing. One of the big issues, one of the protesters unfortunately had an 86-47 sign up, and that caused a lot of the confusion that went on. And I just appreciate your concerns on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Last chance? All right, not seeing any. We will adjourn to executive session.